Four thirty P M and we will call the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Skagit Public Utility District Commissioners to order. And it asks that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I am the pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Lord God, and to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? By next one through five.
I move that we heard the consent agenda items once you're five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if you can say aye.
Aye.
Post. That passes unanimously. And it looks like first up. You're gonna get an update on third quarter financials.
All right, so I'll start with September revenue. Um, this is.
Five years in July, um, we were significantly below last year and the budget. Um, August, we had a big revenue. September, um, again, we're below last year and also the budget. And I did mention this during the budget.
Asked, um, and mentioned also that this is due to the number of billing cycles and then the calendar. And for the month of September, we were basically one billing cycle short, and that resulted in less revenue for, uh, the month of September. The next slide. Hopefully. There, whoops. There we go, one slider at a time. Um, I put this one in and show you, uh, the actual consumption for October. So we don't have October financials done. But I did have the consumption numbers for October. And again, it repeats that same, uh, down in July, up in August, and then down in September. And then you see a big increase again in October. So, um, at the end of September, we are about six percent below last year in total consumption for the year. And after one month in October, we're only three percent below where we were last year. So the end result of that is that we're right on track after, um, September year-to-date numbers. We're at twenty-one point four million dollars. Um, you can see that's a one percent increase over last year, but a hundred percent on tart target for the budget. And forecasting this out again, um, the budget forecast will end up at about twenty-eight point six million dollars of water sales for the year. So I still anticipate that we'll be right on that target at the end of the year. You can see the categories here. Um, residential is our biggest category, fifteen point five million. It's a one percent increase. Commercial lag and government is actually the largest increase. And then we have small decreases at least through September. But some of that'll probably be caught up in October when we build that too. On the expense side, we're at eleven point seven million dollars, um, year-to-date. Uh, it's a five percent increase over the prior year and about ninety percent of the budget. So we're doing well on the budget side on expenses. Um, some of the big changes you'll see, uh, twelve percent below, um, last year on repairs and maintenance. Uh, these are basically district-wide projects. Um, so a lot of it just has to do with the timing of when the billing happens and also when the work happens. And also how much our construction maintenance crews are working on our projects versus other projects. So capital projects or work for others. Um, that shows up down here and you'll see that we are, um, the capital offset is about eight hundred thousand dollars. This is a large increase over last year. And ties in with the amount of capital work that we're doing, both for, um, our own infrastructure projects, but also work orders and service orders for others that we get paid for. Uh, big increase fifteen percent for goods and services. This is a general category made up of a lot of different expenditures. But mainly it's inflationary increases just across the board like we're all experiencing right now, but also includes utility costs and bad debt. Um, which is up significantly this year after the moratorium ended. Um, we're back to a more normal billing and disconnection cycle. And so some of those bad accounts that were accrued during the, um, utility moratorium have now been written off and sent to collections. Um, some of the other increases at the water treatment plant, um, we've been talking about this all year. Uh, we've had to pump for the Judy reservoir. So that's electrical costs that used to fill the reservoir. And also chemical costs have gone up, you know, sometimes fifty percent or more, um, just during this year for the chemicals that are used up there. Capital contributions are monetary and other type contributions that we collect here at the district. Work orders, as I mentioned, and services are work and, um, that is performed for others that were paid for. Donated plant are usually developer projects that build something and then turn it over for the district to maintain in the future. System development fees are hookups for new, uh, construction and then services are for installing the services and the hookups. You'll see right here, right about ninety-nine percent of the budget were over for work orders and service orders. Um, and we're about on target for donated plant. This comes in sporadically through the year whenever developer projects are actually completed and also closed out and capitalized. And then system development charges are for new hookups. Um, we're down, uh, below budget a little bit on system development charges, down significantly from last year. But during, uh, the first half of the year, we had more new construction and, and payments into the system development fund. Um, with the interest rates going up and uncertainty in the economy, it certainly slowed down for new construction. And so that's decreased. Um, but we should end up about on target for the entire year. It's all happened in the beginning of the year and not the end of the year. This is a year-over-year cash flow summary. Um, you can see this is total revenue. So it includes all of the revenues discussed, both from water sales, but other revenues that we get. Twenty-three point seven million dollars. Um, no, uh, real increase over last year. Operating expenses are up to five percent, but this is the big increase. So the transmission line is a majority of this, eighteen point six million dollars. Um, we should be ending the year anywhere between twenty-six and twenty-eight million dollars, depending on the billings and, uh, construction on the transmission project. This is by far the biggest year we've ever had for capital construction. Um, debt service, uh, we've taken out some loans to pay for that. Um, the deficit is all attributed to this capital construction, um, out of operating expenses, which is why we have the loans and the bonds. Um, we're sitting on thirty-five million dollars of reserves right now. Some of that was bonds that we had taken out in, um, anticipation of that capital project and pay for the transmission line. Thirty-five million dollars of total funds, twenty-seven million in the general revenue. And then you can see system development, um, and the capital funds. This is down significantly. Whoops, sorry. Um, these two, um, we, we allocated four million dollars of system development funds that can only be used for expansion projects that was, um, directed by the board. All those went to pay for, um, the transmission line projects. And we put those through, um, this month and also on the capital construction. That's banner bank bonds. And we had about four million dollars at the beginning of the year. As we spend it on capital, we allocate those to the capital projects. And so we're just moving it from one fund to another and this to keep track of those. And then debt service is up to two point one million dollars. We, um, set aside money here for the next debt bond payment, which will be January first. While we have those reserves, we invest them with the state of Washington local government investment program. Um, that's the bottom line on this graph. And you can see if you go back a year ago, uh, we were earning just above zero. Um, after it, uh, they started raising rates, um, we are now up to about two point five six percent. It trap track trails the treasury rates. This is a two-year treasury rate. And the state program only invests up to one year. So we will always be below this rate. But at some point when they start lowering rates again, sometime in the distant future, um, this will overpass and, and we'll actually be earning more than them for a short period of time like we were, um, before COVID hit. But that's where we invest our money. Um, we anticipate spending a majority of those reserves over this winter and into next year for the capital improvement program. We have thirty-eight million dollars in the budget for next year. So all of that money is going to court towards those capital programs. And this graph, I'll show you one more time and then I think I'm gonna retire it after ten minutes. So this is our, um, our rareages, um, over ninety days are AR, uh, aging. And I go all the way back to pre-COVID here and the normal at the time, on this side, we have dollars, which is the bar graph. And on this, it's percentage of the rear ridges and that's the wine graph. And so back in March, right when COVID started, we are below twenty-five thousand dollars and one percent of our rear ridges were beyond ninety days. And that's normal because we don't allow people to accrue big arrearsages. And then if they don't pay after, um, the sixty or ninety days, we actually turn them off. Um, so, but when the moratorium hit, people chose not to pay or couldn't pay. Um, both of those occurrences happened. And over time it grew and grew and grew. Um, there are some interesting things here happened. We think it has to do with tax refunds and some government assistance funds that were issued and we kind of flattened out. And then at the beginning of this year, um, the moratorium ended in October. And then in January, we started our normal notifications and, and disconnections. And this has just dropped off steadily all the way till today. And now we're back to a normal, um, amount of the same type of transitions that happen. Every Monday, there's a disconnection list generated and there's between fifteen and twenty-five people on it. Um, and unfortunately, some of those people are on it each every two weeks, but, um, they get back turned on. Um, and that's our just normal kind of transition. And unfortunately, that's what's happened. Um, we continue to refer people to community action. There is still utility money, um, available and rental assistance money that can be used for utilities. Um, so that is all, uh, done through the nonprofit organization. Um, I continue to hope that the state governor's money would be made available. Um, they came out with the final guidance. I mentioned this during the budget about, uh, two weeks ago. And our arrearsages is now seventy-five hundred dollars. So unfortunately, it's not going to help any of our customers. But that money is going to be reallocated to other utilities in the state and hopefully to community action. So, um, if you know of anyone that needs assistance, we continue to reference people to them. And they do have money available and programs available to help them. Right. And that does it for me unless there's any questions on the year-to-date numbers for a third quarter.
No.
Very good.
Almost back to normal.
Thank you, Bren. All right. So next, uh, slide here. Uh, next up is audience comments. If you're in the audience this evening and wishing to make a comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and city of residence. We ask that you limit your comments to four minutes or less. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is, uh, Stuart Siegel. I apologize for running up here so quick, but I'm still at work. And I need to be back at the Carnation Building very soon. Um, my name is Stuart Siegel. I work in the mental health field as a counselor. Um, I've been in this community since, uh, nineteen eighty-nine and I'm a P U D customer. What, what else was I supposed to? Is there anything that?
Name and city residence.
Yeah. So I, I, I live in the Burlington area there. And I, I came here. I, I hope this is appropriate for the, uh, agenda today. Uh, I've never done this before, but I was compelled based on the article that I read in the paper, uh, about Jermaine that I wanted to come here and just briefly, um, say a, a, a reference point. Um, I have known Jermaine since at least the early nineties. Um, I've worked with her in different capacities. And I've been a counselor for forty-one years. There's not much that I do good, but I'm good in this one area and I'm good in discernment. Uh, I have a good, at my age, discernment of who's the real deal. And I just simply wanted to say, I don't know all the details, but what I read. And, and I myself sometimes miss it when it comes to perfect judgment. And so I don't think there's any of us here in this room that, uh, hasn't made a any kind of, uh, of near miss or miss when it comes to doing things or executing things perfectly. But what I will say is my knowledge of Jermaine is one of, this is a person of character and integrity. Um, she's worked for that reputation. And, uh, I have seen her as a community servant. I have seen her in the trenches. I used to do, uh, foster care for thirty years for the Humane Society with big throwaway tall dogs, old dogs, people who wanted to, and in order to keep them maintained so that they could have a life. Jermaine was the first person that rolled up her sleeves to help me help these. And, uh, I just simply wanted to take a moment as I have and not go past that, but to say that I know that Jermaine, I don't know all the details. I just know this is a person of character of, of good reputation. And I'm just so sorry to see what is, what, what happened with that whole incident. But I would go down with this lady's ship anytime because she has simply worked hard for that. And she did not, you know, this was, this was just, I'm a jack in the box right now and I gotta run. But I simply wanted to take your time and simply vouch for the fact that, uh, this, this is a very good person. And I feel as a community in whatever capacity she's in, we're fortunate to have her serve in the role that she did. So thanks for the privilege to talk to you all. And if you don't mind me saying, I'll see you later.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience tonight wishing to offer comments? Step up to the mic.
Good evening. Oh, my name is Mary Hudson. I live in Mount Vernon, P U D customer, um, for years. And I too, I want to echo what Stuart said. I'm was so happy to hear him speak. Um, I've known Jermaine for years. I know her. I know her person. I know her heart. I know that we all, like Stuart said, we all make mistakes and wish doggone it. Sure, like, take that one back, but that doesn't always work. Um, but I know she's a servant leader. She has given her time, her talent, everything she has to so many organizations in our, in our county. We're so fortunate to have her here. I'm proud to call her my friend. And I just want to express my support for her.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else in the room tonight wishing to offer comments? Step on up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Carmen Williams. I have been in Skagit County for twenty years. I'm a small business owner and Jermaine was one of the first people I met when I moved to Skagit County. Um, I think our first, uh, first thing that we did together was, uh, working with the Humane Society with, uh, to try to stop the euthanasia of many dogs. Um, during the years, we've kind of been in and out of each other's lives many times. And, uh, when I found out about this incident, in fact, I think I may have been the first person that told you about the newspaper article, which I just found appalling with her face spread all over there. She looked like a bank robber or something. Anyway, um, I'm, I've just known her to be a person of high character and integrity. And I cannot imagine her stealing anybody's sign. I think it was probably, in fact, this, the day right after the incident. Um, she had come out to my place of business and there was another person there. And she told us about the incident and nothing that she said, it was just one of those things that she felt. Uh, let me just back up a little bit. Two weeks before that, she had sent me a, an email with, um, or a text, I think, with pictures of her signs that had been vandalized. Somebody had been taking them and putting them on the ground and taking the metal wire and sticking them in there and, and stealing them too. And she was very frustrated about that. So, um, the day after the incident, you know, when she drove by the sign, um, apparently she felt really frustrated and disrespected because somebody had put a sign that blocked her sign. So, um, I think that by, with the restaurant and the misunderstanding and stuff like that, I don't think she ever, ever had an intention of taking that sign. And also the sign was returned. So it really didn't hurt. This whole incident actually helped her component and really hurt her. And I don't think that she would ever do anything to, um, to hurt anybody's chances. I think she's a, she's a straight shooter. I think she's a very fair person and I, I'm really sorry about this incident, but I do want to tell people I have known her for many, many years. And I don't think that she had any mischief or, or any, and you know, thing to hurt the other person in, in her, um, in her heart when this incident happened. So anyway, I'm here for her today.
Thank you. Um, anyone else in the audience wishing to offer comments? Step to the mic.
Uh, Eli Sparks, Sidra Woolley, uh, full disclosure for the record, I am Jermaine's boyfriend. So I think we probably all know why I'm here and of course who I would support. Um, not much to add beyond what has already been said in regards to, uh, you know, really Jermaine gives a lot of her time and energy to the community, uh, to Skagit Valley. Um, I would probably say perhaps a little bit too much. It'd be nice if we could just stay home once in a while, but, um, she loves doing it and she's very passionate about helping the community. And just wanted to say that I'm here to support her.
All right. So looks like that is the extent of audience in the room comments tonight. Anyone on Zoom? Use the raise your hand function there to offer comments. I'm not seeing any there. All right, we will close public comments and go into the managers' reports.
George, all right. Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon.
Hi, George.
I know there's a lot of stuff to talk about. I mean, again, a lot of business, but there's also, uh, please. Uh, it wasn't. Share in the meeting. So he had a, a baby boy.
Growing boy now.
So that's why you haven't seen him around. He's been off, you know, being a dad. Um, let's see, other stuff. Uh, the state auditor's office is, has not wrapped up their audit just quite yet. Uh, we're hoping that they do that soon. Um, but as a result, there's no schedule for the exit conference. So we'll, Brian will keep a, an ear to the ground, find out when that is, and then we'll let you all know. And then get that scheduled as well. Most likely to be on Zoom. And so it'd be easier to participate for everybody. Um, there are emails going out this week for the monthly meetings for Wapuda that are happening next week. So, um, just remember for when those are and sign up. It's all via Zoom. I don't think there's any in-person attendance for next week's meetings. But the annual conference is coming up at the end of this month in Spokane. Um, all the information for attending and room blocks and all that should, you should have that. And if you need us slash Shannon to take care of anything, uh, registration or anything like that, just let us know.
I think the room block ended just the end of last.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah.
Last week, yeah, thirty-first.
Um, let's see what else. Um, speaking of meetings, so October twenty-eighth, we had a meeting here. Uh, Commissioner Miller was there. We had, uh, representatives from T-Mobile. And so I think that's worthy of mentioning. T-Mobile's interested in improving their, their five G coverage in Skagit County. And so they are interested in attaching to some of our infrastructure. So we feel like there may be a partnership that we can get from that if it makes sense. Uh, we're sharing some of the locations of our tank sites and, and different things. And, uh, I think we have another meeting on the books for
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. So we're gonna follow up and see if they're interested. They're, they're looking to make a big investment in the state as well as the county. So, um, we'll see if we can make something work. That might involve also Skagit Net Sarah was here. Uh, there may be additional to hanging infrastructure on our, or towers on infrastructure. It may be looking at leasing some fiber as well. Which might help prevent something, you know, the things like what happened yesterday with all this, the, the coverage outage. So whatever we can do to keep that happening.
Would be good. Day long.
That was not good. Um, yesterday, we hosted the Mount Vernon School District for a brief tour of this building. Because, uh, they're, they expressed interest in potentially, uh, relocating here when we go to our new facility. So first tour, they seem interested. We're gonna keep discussing it, but there may be, uh, something that we can work out as terms of a lease. They own multiple properties and buildings in Mount Vernon. They're kind of spread out. And this facility will allow them to bring all the people together. It's got more features in the buildings. They have just simply ADA access and things like that. So they're gonna go back and talk to their board and have more discussions about how this may work. Obviously, it's not till twenty twenty-four that we'd be moving into our facility. So there's a lot of time, but we're just trying to lighten things up. So there may be something to work on there. Um, and then Shannon wanted me to make sure I mentioned the blood drive. So everybody should have got an email about that. It's on December seventh. And spots are filling up fast. So for everybody, if you haven't got your spot yet, make sure you do that soon. May not get a chance.
Have to sign up to get poked.
Yeah. Well, you get a, a ten dollar gift card from the Red Cross too, as a benefit for coming. So. Um, I got more to say. Uh, speaking of Shannon, so yesterday she sent out our newsletter. It's a newsletter that has department updates in it, and the plan is to send that out monthly. And, um, that's part of our strategic plan, uh, improvement and communication, internal communication. So hopefully everybody got that. I think, um, it was a really well-written update to all the departments. Thanks for all the managers for providing all the content, but it's a way to share a lot of the other things that staff don't get to hear. And it's not just projects. There's updates. There's recognition. There's little things that are going on and there's links provided for if people want to drill in further and get, uh, more information. Like simply the agenda packets are one click away. You know, if you want to go in and, and see those, uh, the meeting Zoom links are on there as well. So I think there's gonna be a lot of value in that. And I'm interested in feedback from staff too. Uh, as far as that's concerned. So thank you, Shannon, for getting all that together. There's so much information in that newsletter that I feel like I don't need to provide an update. Everything's kind of in there when I started writing it, but I, I feel like there's still a couple of things just worth mentioning in the meeting. Uh, we're currently hiring for three positions. So the maintenance department, one treatment plant and an accountant. So the applications are in, interviews are taking place this month. And, uh, we'll be looking to hire people. So we got a lot of applications for each of those positions. We're hoping to find some good people. Uh, construction projects are still underway. Mark provided a good update in that newsletter about Gilligan Creek Road Construction, transmission line, and then the scrubber is, uh, under construction, the treatment plant as well. So that's my update. If there's any questions or anything else you want to know.
Any, any questions?
I don't know. But I did want to compliment the, the monthly newsletter thing. It was really nice.
Yeah, that's good.
It's, everything's in one bundle instead of having to dig through a bunch of emails.
Yeah, Doyle's organization is really good.
All right. So looks like Jay is up with a safety department update.
Good evening.
Okay, highlights all about safety and risk. All right. Bill said, all right, thank you. All right. First thing I wanted to start us off with is our training and our occupational health screening, uh, efforts that we've been, that we do and that we continue to do. It's a in-progress thing all the time. Um, in the last three months, we've had a, a lot of people at the water treatment plant go through a hazardous waste operations, uh, refresher. We did a, uh, earthquake drill recently. Um, we've even done things like chlorine release drills. Um, and we've also trained up on a new wildfire smoke rule that L and I is actually trying to finalize into a, uh, an actual workplace safety rule. Right now it's an emergency rule. Um, but we're going, we're gearing ourselves up and getting ready for L and I to pass a permanent rule on protect.
On protecting our employees from wildfire smoke, so uh we've been trying to do a good job of staying ahead of that. And preparing our employees for that reality. Um, so uh we're ahead of the curve with that, so proud of that effort. And we're gonna be doing a lot more um in-person type training for those kinds of things soon. Um, ongoing stuff that we've been doing are hearing testing for people who are exposed to loud noise at work. Um, and also, we're gonna be refreshing the work skills needed to work with asbestos cement pipe. Uh, we do this typically in the winter or spring every year. And we try to refresh those skills because it's so important to protect our employees. Uh, from working with a little bit of asbestos that we do have in our system, uh, we want to be very careful with. So this is how we do that. Um, and of course, we're gonna be doing a very big offering of first aid and CPR come January. We have a four-day. Um, offering. It's gonna be fourteen people per class, spread over a forty period. Uh, so roughly fifty-six employees will have an opportunity to get CPR first aid and AED and some other skills uh trained to them. Um, and then we have some others that we routinely do, like Burlington Northern right of way. Um, anybody that is within twenty-five feet. Of the Burlington Northern right of way has to actually be safety trained every year. Um, and it's an online format, so it's not very exciting. Um, but it it's a, it's a federal requirement, so we do comply with it. Um, and then finally confined space safety, which is uh something that's very integral and important to almost every unit within the district. Uh, so we have people that do it more than others and my job is to make sure that every everybody that does it understands it equally. Uh, so we're gonna be doing some in-person training for that start of beginning of the year. And as always, one of the less exciting things that uh that my office does is creating uh policies for how we actually safely do our work. Um, you guys get to see those in the form of S P and Ps that cross through your uh agenda packets. Um, we haven't had a lot of those recently, but we have another one coming up. That's really important and that's our safety training and our occupational health screening. Um, uh, protocol and that's important because it'll lay the uh. It'll lay the foundation for what each of our employees is supposed to be trained in. And also which kinds of health and occupational screenings we need to do for each of them. Uh, based on their occupational exposures. So everybody's position has been. Cross-referenced and we understand what kinds of uh hazards they're exposed to. And what kinds of trainings and also what kinds of occupational health screenings they need uh to keep themselves safe and also measure. Um, anything such as a decrease in hearing, making sure that we're keeping a good track on that. Uh, so that's part of, that's part of the writing that we've been doing. And the uh safety committee helps me with that. Um, so what, when you guys eventually see these policies, they've actually been through the safety committee. Myself and also the uh quite a few of the managers actually uh get to take a look at these and put uh provide their input into them as well. So they're well-vetted, which I'm very happy about. Um, our overall written accident prevention plan, which is all of our written programs is roughly half written right now. Um, so that may not sound good, but that's actually very good. Um, that means that we actually have. English where L and I requires it on half of our our programs. And where we don't have English, we actually just simply say, we follow whatever L and I tells us to do. Um, and we tend to focus our efforts on writing on the programs that affect the most people first. Um, and we'll get down to the special, you know, the really uh, the really weird and kind of one-off programs. As we make more and more progress, we'll we'll start bringing you those uh those programs to look at. So anybody have any questions about this stuff yet? Okay, not very exciting stuff, I know. Okay, this is the fun stuff. Okay, so um we did the shakeout drill on the twentieth of October. Um, it was a light day. We had a lot of people that were in the field that were very busy that day. Uh, but people who were actually stationary and in our office buildings participated. So we had thirty of our employees who were able to actually get underneath a desk. They're able to, they're able to drop cover and hold on. Um, and uh we learned a lot from this drill and that's the whole purpose behind having them, so we made some mistakes. Um, so we did get, the one of the things that we didn't do is we actually missed a person on head count. Uh, we missed our acting general manager from on head count, so. Um, so we do make mistakes and so we figured out that we had kind of a, we had a hole in our accountability for doing our floor warden work. Uh, so we identified that. We also identified that we don't have a great way to communicate. Uh, within our buildings anymore, so uh Alistair, myself and some people who are smarter than me are coming up with ways to communicate drills. And communicate emergencies throughout our our district, so there were some things that we identified. So in my mind, that means that this was a very successful drill. Um, so entire reason we do them. Anybody had, anybody have any questions about the drill? We're gonna be doing more stuff like this, fire drills, those kinds of things too, as as time wears on. Okay. Um, one of the exciting projects I have coming up for this coming year um is a seismic retrofit design. And we're gonna be focusing hopefully on Clearwell number three. And I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of what that means. It's a big tank. Um, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we put our finished water in there and allowed to have more contact time with chlorine, correct? So it's a, it's a really, really big tank. And uh it's built relatively recently, so two thousand six, I guess you can consider that fairly recent. Um, it has all the things you would expect of a normal tank. Um, but it might, I don't know for certain, but it might benefit from having seismically triggered isolation valves on it. I'm gonna actually have to get with some people and and find out whether it'll benefit from that or not. Um, and also, it might benefit from being able to get into the water if it is isolated from the rest of the system. And if so, we got to figure out how to do that. Um, I don't know what that'll look like yet, but it is exciting. This is our, this is our guinea pig. Uh, we haven't done this kind of project um to retrofit. Um, at at least not to my knowledge, we haven't done anything retrofitting, so um this is, this is very exciting, so we'll share the progress with this. In the new year, uh, we'll let you guys know how this is going and how it might look. Um, something that we've been working on is safe access. I think I told the board. A few, a few times about uh trying to improve ladder access. Making sure that our people can actually safely maintain our our core facilities. This is really important and I use a really, really uh low-hanging fruit example. This picture is actually the ninth and Highland tank. And they're right there. I don't know if it sticks out. There's a gap right here between the ground. And the first access ladder, that's about sixteen feet right there. And now, I'm not saying we don't have ladders that can't reach that, but this is actually, this is the most dangerous part. Of accessing a tank is actually right here at the transition. And having it sixteen feet above the ground, um, it just makes it that much more dangerous. So what we want to do. Is we want to eliminate some of those hazards. We're gonna drop ladders down to the ground or closer to the ground. Um, and the idea at the time was to keep the high schoolers nearby from climbing our tanks. Okay, um, a totally reasonable reason to do this. Um, but we also have intrusion alarms that are on this particular tank. We also have fences. And we have other things that protect the district and protect um the community. Um, but we also need to think about protecting our employees, so. So we're gonna do something that kind of split the difference and compromise between the two uh right there. So you can see the list of improvements that we're making in twenty twenty-two Clearwells. Uh, we've done a few ladders. We've already done fall protection anchors on several tanks. And in twenty twenty-three, we have a plan to do some more. And here's what those uh, here's what fall protection anchors look like when they're installed on the tanks. So they're nothing really all that fancy, really. Um, they're just simply a D-bolt. And the hard part is, is that sometimes we have to wait. To put these on because there's no real good place to actually attach things onto our tanks. Uh, we had to wait for a vent project. Mike Fox and his staff actually worked on getting vents replaced on several of our tanks. It took the opportunity to go up there while they were doing that work and actually install anchors at the same time. So leveraging work that's already been done or being done in order to do other work is really, really important. Now, it's tough to see here, but there's actually an anchor here and there's actually a permanent lanyard. Uh, that can you can use to tie off to that's attached to this. This is our tallest tank. This is the Eagle's Nest. It was a hundred and eight feet tall. So um really important uh to have this protection. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the uh, I don't know if the board had heard about this or not. If I'm the first to tell you about it, we actually dropped a chlorine tank um recently, so. This is one of our employees up at the treatment plant. Um, this is from a uh camera feed. And you can see him in the frame in the back. He's got a patrol in his hand. Um, and you can see at his feet, very close to his feet, is the tank. And then this part right here is actually the jig, right, that actually holds onto either end. Of that tank when it's suspended in the air. What you don't see is you don't actually see the wire rope that comes down and actually holds all that up. Okay, so I'll show you what that looks like. This is what happened to that wire rope. It actually parted. Um, it came away from a connection um in the, in the winch assembly itself, so. And then when that fell down, when that tank fell down, here's the rollers on the floor that actually hold the tank in position. Kind of hard to see in this picture, but it actually it up to pretty good dent. And it left two dents in that chlorine tank. So um this all happened on October fourth. The chief cause was the field rope wire attachment. The contributing factor was the fact that that winch was built nineteen eighty-nine. It was a very old winch or a very old uh hoist. Okay, so um age was definitely the chief contributor to that. Um, it had been maintained properly for many, many years. Um, but it just simply let go. Uh, wire rope. Can do that um at given time, so what we're going to do. And there were no injuries and there was very minimal damage. The tank did its job. The tanks are built to take a beating and they did just that. Uh, nobody was injured, so I'm very, very thankful about that. But we also want to prevent it from ever occurring again. So we are going to be installing, even though we rebuilt the old hoist. We're gonna be replacing it with a chain hoist. Chain is far less likely to fail. Um, it's more durable and it's a huge upgrade. It reduces the amount of maintenance and it reduces the likelihood of failure. So we're gonna be replacing um that hoist out there, so a good success story. Um, came out of a very close call um with that, so very happy about that. Anybody have any questions about that? Yeah, okay. Alright, um, in the claims department, um, I'm actually gonna focus a little bit on uh recouping from our damages we incur. Normally, I spend a lot of time going out and uh answering for things that we do that might damage people's property. I'm gonna do the reverse here and talk about what it is to go out into the community and look to try to recoup for damage that occurs to district property. Um, this unfortunately is not a success story. If you look on the picture. There's actually what's called valve cans. There's a, there's a triple valve can right here, right in the ditch line. And the fellow driving this vehicle uh went off the road. And the vehicle basically did kind of a diagonal slide. Across that ditch and took those out and damaged them, caused about seven hundred fifty dollars worth of damage. Um, and unfortunately, we couldn't recoup anything from that because he had no insurance, had no way to pay. Um, and the cop arrested him for DUI uh and also for an outstanding warrant, so. We kind of figured he wasn't gonna have a lot of opportunity to help us with that. Um, so we moved on. Alright, but on the other side of the spectrum, um, I think you guys have seen some of the. You probably have heard about some of the damage that occurred to the Bow Hill Pump House. Um, and this was from an uh errant driver coming down uh Bow Hill Road. That actually smacked into a power pole, which is, that's what this is. Power pole cracked, cracked up here. Those are transformers right here that spilled oil. Transformer oil all up and down the side of the building here and also all over the ground. Um, did quite a bit of damage to the roof of our building and the eve line. On the building and damaged our exhaust uh ventilation on the building as well. So it cost us thirty-two thousand dollars in repairs uh for us. And uh it cost a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in repairs for Punishment Sound Energy, okay? Uh, so quite a bit of damage just from that one errant vehicle and we were able to recoup all thirty-two thousand for us uh from insurance, so. Takes a bit of effort to go out there and 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 do that, so I just wanted to kind of illustrate. Sometimes things don't work out so well. All the times they do. The good news is, is everybody here walked away okay. So uh, so anyway, just wanted to kind of give you an update on some of those efforts. See if you guys have any questions.
Voice you need, so you would, that, I don't know how they, how that one would work. You just need the one.
I'm sorry.
You just need one.
You only need one voice, yes.
I see, yeah, because I was wondering how the tanks were positioned and.
It it's hard to explain with, I should have put a picture up there to kind of show it, but you have a single point uh wire cable that comes down. And it it attaches on that metal jig that you saw. A jig has two hooks. And those two hooks just settle into the, either end of that tank and lift it simultaneously, so. As long as your downward thrust pulling on that jig, it'll hold that tank in position. And uh, so that didn't fail. It was, it was all about the wire rope actually just pulling out of its anchorage. So and it's. Not terribly unusual, but it uh what an inopportune time for it to happen. Um, so.
Things up there this year.
Yes, it was recently certified, re-inspected. Yeah, and that, so that was the unusual thing is that we just had the the hoist itself had just been looked at like in July. And so it it was just, I couldn't believe that, you know, that happened so rapidly after that, but things happen. Um, so we're gonna do things that we can to assure the uh that that's not a weak link in our process. So it's all we can do.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
Anything else I can do? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Alright, so went to new business, the two thousand twenty-three budget that is gonna be resolution twenty-two ninety-five dash twenty-two. And. Brian, are you?
Basically, I'm here to answer any questions. I think um, as you all know, we've been talking about the budget for the past month. Um, with the board, held several work sessions and departments presented their requests to you. Um, the memo in the packet outlines the. Operating increase of about one point three million dollars to eighteen point six million dollars. Um, and then we also talked a lot about our capital plan, which is uh budgeted for thirty-seven and a half million dollars. I covered some of the highlights and changes in the budget um from last year to this year. And then on the second page of the memo, um, any of the changes that we discussed or were modified from the original proposed budget till tonight. And so um all of those are outlined on the back um or the second page, if you could scroll down there and that. Um, which is too small to read. Um, but uh the first one on there was the hoist that we were just talking about. And then um engineering department had several changes to the timing and some of the projects in the capital improvement plan. Um, we added uh some SCADA scanning and equipment. And then the comp study results came in between the proposed budget and tonight's bu- uh budget for next year. And that increased um salaries, benefits and the associated. Um, taxes that we pay for those salaries and benefits, but the net change from uh the proposed budget to the. Uh, budget presented to you tonight is a negative one hundred and twenty-nine thousand um dollars. Um, also, I wanted to mention that um. We did incorporate the five percent increase for rates. Um, that's five percent on across all rates plus larger increases for large consumers, so. Um, those average between six and eight percent per year, um in addition to the five percent on the monthly charges. And I'd be happy to discuss any of those changes with you, answer any questions, or if we need more time, we can take time to discuss anything in the budget. We could do that. We can talk about that. Um, I think uh we have not talked about it um internally yet, so if that's something that you would like to do. It usually does take about a year. Yeah, um, so if you recall, that resolution was um a set block for five years. It can be modified in any year up or down based on the board. Um, and it does do five, five percent increases each of those, and then at the end of that, it does revert to a CPI. Um, so if no action is taken by any board or future board, it would revert revert to that. Um, right now, at the time, that was like three percent. Um, I'm not sure that we want to have it just go to the CPI, but again. Each year would come back with uh current events or current uh market factors and we could modify that, but um. It 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 could be done either preemptively and George and I, we can talk, talk about that. Um, it's not in the work plan yet, um, so we could do it sometime this year and engage them for that. I think it really also depends on board input on. How you feel about the rate structure and if it needs to be modified, um, we can do some of those adjustments without. Changing the whole structure again. Um, we implemented several things. We eliminated the capital charge and we distributed that on meter size, so. Um, and we shifted some of the residential costs to commercial costs, so those were the main. So and we shifted some of the residential costs to commercial costs. So those were the main things that were identified and created the ag rate, I should mention. Out of that. And so if we felt that we want to reexamine that to see if the cost of service is keeping up with that or needs to be increased in areas. Or we can continue to increase the rate. The other one is on the consumption charge. So if you recall before the more water you use, the rates went down. We are trying to get it to go the other way. So as you go from tier one to tier two or three, you actually will pay more. And so we've started doing that and that's why those rates are increasing faster and we can continue to do that without any other changes. But it just kind of depends on if we feel that there's significant changes or something that you'd like to add. The other thing would be is if you wanted to add any different rates. So that's another reason to do a rate structure and cost of study. So.
Definitely something we can talk about next year.
Okay. Through the year. A lot of work they did when they worked with us five years ago was the cost of service analysis. That was a big portion of the work. And I don't know if that needs to be done as often as a rate study. So we could look at what they did before and maybe just break off the rate part and it wouldn't take as long.
Yeah, that was kind of my thinking was just so that we stay current with.
With the rates.
Projected capital needs and whatnot.
They could put it on a discussion item and send out the rate study and have everybody look at it and then see if there's things that you'd like to just modify or discuss. And then decide at that point, you know, how much of that consulting we need or not. That time, so.
But it is really, we've got plenty of time to do that. We didn't put anything in the budget for next year, but yeah, we've got lots of time to talk about it. I might just mention one thing about the the changes in the budget and things that maybe aren't in there. So expansion gadget. Typically, we have a line item for gadget net for contribution to expenses. And. Twenty twenty two hasn't been resolved yet in terms of total expenses. So we're still talking to the board, trying to. Resolve the overall expenses for this year before making a commitment for next year. So there are no, there's no line item in the twenty twenty three button right now, which is contribution. We will likely come back to the board early next year. Once we get clarity on what those expenses are for this year and then for next year, we we just want more detailed information before we do that. I think the last time we contributed, it was fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we actually budgeted for that and we only contributed eleven, twelve thousand dollars. And so we did it on quarterly installments. And so part of the forecast was assumed that. At the end of that year, with our contribution and the match from the port, that we would be cash flow positive. So at this point, that's still the assumption. Now we're going back. They had a number of changes over there for a number of hookups and then staffing issues with Andrew leaving. So we're waiting for them to update those costs and those estimates for next year and to finalize this year. So I know there have the auditors over there at the same time. So I think we're all working on the same thing.
Any further questions, Brian?
Nope. Thank you, Brian.
So I would just ask that you take action and approve resolution twenty two ninety five then and adopt the budget.
I went to adopt the budget and resolution on twenty two nine five dash two. Adopting the final budget for the calendar year twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion of second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Pass the twenty twenty three budget has passed. And next up, George with the.
All right, so we. Going to present the. Strategic plan update and we've got our consulting team from Burke Consultants, Burke Consulting. They're on Zoom right now as well. So Brian Murphy and Sabrina Santos are gonna help present this. So I think, Brian, are you going to share your screen? To show the slide deck and we're going to use that to talk about process and content.
Sure, I'm happy to do that, George. I just am not able to share the screen while another participant is sharing. So just let me know when the right time. All right, let me give that a try. There you go. Great. Would you like me to get started, George, or did you want to say a few words first? Sorry, you're muted.
Quite a bit of time right since August meeting and talking about the strategic plan update. So like I said, I'm going to talk about some of the content at the end of the presentation, but Brian and Sabrina are going to talk about process. And so, yeah, take it away, Brian.
All right. Well, great. Thank you. And good evening, commissioners. Glad to be with you again. I'll be at virtually and thank you, George, for the intro. Yeah, we'll speak very briefly here about process and and then George will speak through, talk through the recommended draft plan that is in front of the commission for action this evening. So in terms of the process, I mean, we really should start by saying that this is an update to the past plan. The that the PUD worked with from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. And we understand it's been an active part of how the commission and how the general manager manage and operate the business, the organization. It has been, you know, needed for an update. It's it's been quite a few years. We've had a pandemic in the interim. And so this is an opportunity to step back and assess conditions. And not set a new strategy for the PUD, but to refresh the strategy that was there. And we really did take, you know, an honest look at the organization of the of the strategy and the key points that we wanted to emphasize. And the commission and the planning committee made some refinements to the past plan. So you'll see some changes, but also some similarity to that past plan. Sabrina will speak a bit about how we did engage the board, the full staff of the PUD and some key partners in the in the community and the input that we got. And I'll just mention that we did have a very collaborative process. Here between the kickoff in June and then our our meeting this evening. We were fortunate to have the full board in attendance for two of these meetings, kind of bookending the planning process. So in mid-August and then in early October. We led with interviews with each of the board members that interviews are sorry, a survey of regional partners. And then a staff survey and we brought the results of that in the form of a summary of that analysis to that meeting in August. We identified some issues to think about with a planning committee and the board. And then the planning committee met two times without the presence of the board to work on draft materials that we then workshop in early October. Resulting in the recommended draft that you'll see in front of you in your packet this evening. I do want to just give a quick and and very heartfelt thank you to the members of the strategic planning committee. They did more than join four meetings, particularly some of the folks who served as leads for different areas really did roll up their sleeves and work on this material. They consumed the information that came to them and made some really thoughtful recommendations and material that's in front of you this evening. So Sabrina, I'll let you speak to what we heard.
Sure. Thank you. So yeah, as Brian mentioned, our process included some surveys and some interviews. So we started by conducting individual interviews with our three commissioners. And the main strengths brought up in those conversations were the district's people and collaboration. And then focal strategic issues were stewardship, infrastructure, succession and communications. Next, we sent out a survey to stakeholders and staff. So for the stakeholders, we got sixteen responses back. And they all kind of said that they enjoyed the district's service delivery and customer service. But would like some improvement in the areas of communication development and transparency. From the staff survey, we received sixty responses. It was about seventy five percent of the district staff. Generally, the responses are pretty favorable and they also indicated to us that we need to get some more information about the district's internal communication. So as a follow up, we sent out a staff survey focusing solely on internal communications and had about a sixty percent response rate. And this survey told us that the district staff were interested in seeing more lateral communication, more transparency and consistency. And this is all reflected in the updates to the plan, which George will go over. So George, I will pass it on to you.
All right. The recommended draft plan. So what is in the packet? Is the content of the plan. It's still being worked on in terms of graphics and the final layout will show that at the end of the slide deck with the next steps. But as far as the content's concerned, the plan didn't change a whole lot in twenty eighteen. That was just it was the first strategic plan that we did. And, you know, we're, I think we did a good job, but I think every update that you do, you just refine it. It gets a little bit better. So in terms of the plan and how it changed. There were subtle changes to make improvements, but not wholesale changes. You know, our our mission, vision and core values remain unchanged. Because now that everybody knows it verbatim, we don't want to change that because every time they get tested, it won't quite work, right? So we left that for the staff's benefit. Just kidding. Instead of statement of intense, it's phrased in the document as desired outcomes and indicators of success. And I think that helps frame some of the things that we want to achieve. We've got the. Put them right. Those are. That's our primary mission. That's what we do. And so now we are making water the primary focus of our services in that first goal. And and you'll see that slide, but in terms of the communication strategy, there's some small changes there that that Kevin made improvements on. And then there's some small changes of organizational development goals as well, but small tweaks, not not big changes, which I think is good for us. Next page. So this is our mission, vision and values. We think these are still worthwhile to keep. All the staff, we use this in our messaging. When we do presentations, we use it in meetings. We use it at a lot of different places. And so I think we all believe in this and we wanted to leave it the same. In terms of the three main goals, so water service in the. In the previous or current strategic plans, the first goal talked about water and then it mentioned telecom and then it mentioned sewer. And like I said, we refine that to focus on the water delivery part. That's where you see the focus here. Our outcomes are listed. There's four of them that we. Are striving for and then the goals that we have. The goals are very similar with one small change. So the. Data informed investments is what we want to do as as one of our primary goals. We want to be a steward of water resources. Those haven't changed a lot. The third one is where we're combining. That telecom part of it into our water services. So we still are a partner with Gadget Net. We still want to support that LLC and make that successful. But for us, we want to focus on telecom as helping our water delivery. So we want to connect our assets for high speed communication. So that's where our focus is going to be in this first goal. So that it is more pointed at water delivery and water service. I think that was a really broad consensus amongst the whole planning committee and I think the board agreed with that as well. Skagitet, I'll just mention again, it's not that we are not. We're maintaining our support and we're going to help make that a success. It's just not a primary focus on on our in our strategic plan. Going to the next. So the second goal is a communication goal and this hasn't changed a lot. Desired outcomes are clarified as compared to the previous plan. But most of the goals are very similar to what we have now. I think one of the biggest changes is in goal B. We currently have trying to seek opportunities to engage youth in water related education and we changed that. We took the youth part out because. For us, I think we need to engage in communication with everybody, not just youth. We're we're out in the market right now looking for water treatment plant operators. We're looking for maintenance workers and accountants. There is just not a huge market in the water industry when you go out and look for people, experienced people. So we want to engage everybody in a water related education to get them interested. So that we can bring them here and have them work here. So I think to me, that's the biggest change in this in this goal. And then the third one is organizational development. Again, we refine some desired outcomes. So that staff can look at them and and people trying to achieve the strategic plan can look at them and be focused. The one. Big thing here that stands out to me is in goals, part A. The increase in alignment across the organization that will watch gadget approach. So. What does one's gadget mean? It's something that we talked about. Brian at Burke brought this up in one of our work sessions. And to me, it means making decisions and changes with the overall organization in mind. And and involving people in those decisions and changes. We're implementing that right now. We're trying to improve communication. Case in point, the newsletter that went out yesterday. We're already trying to achieve these goals right now. I've got meetings set up with different departments. Shannon's helping me get those organized. Because that's what the staff survey told us about improving communication. So. That's that one gadget approach is to increase alignment by improving communication. A lot of that rests with me and I'm going to try and commit more time to doing that. There's communication tools we can use, email, all staff meetings, those kinds of things. So we're already trying to get a running start on these. So to me, that's the that's a big change in this organizational belt and goal. The others obviously are important. We still want to retain and develop a high quality workforce. And as always, we want to be industry leaders. We all now have added the system resiliency and emergency preparedness in there. So that gets back to Jay's presentation from earlier. That's that's also a focus for ours for us as well. So that's in a nutshell, kind of what the the plan, how the plan reads now. Obviously, the. All the rest of the document contains some more details, but the the next slide talks about implementation framework. And so there's kind of a schedule here that's rooted in our budget cycle. And so February, it lists me giving a mid-year update because that's kind of mid-year between when we start doing budgets. August is when we really bear down and start trying to figure out the budget. So to me, February is a mid-year update to the board. August is an end of year update to the board. September, October is when departments are working on goals for the next year. That's when we can figure out if we're achieving the goals in the plan. And then our budget, our budget should reflect us if we're if we're if we need to make budget requests to get the strategic plan objectives done, that's where that happens as well. So that's how the implementation is done in terms of the the cycle for budgeting and for goal setting as well. So I I think that'll work. I think it makes it, it helps tie things together. We've got a late start. Obviously, this year, this year. We're already doing the budget. We're just trying to approve the plan. So our first step is to do department goals for next year. So that's what we'll start with next year, but I'll give you an update in February and then we'll run those through to August and we'll give you the end of the year update.
George, something that'd be useful for me is when when we do these, the adjustments that in in motion adjustments like Chen's newsletter. Yep. If we're going to test and iterate, which I think is a fantastic way to go about this. I mean, those would be really useful to bring up more than just in February. So.
Yes.
Shot it yesterday. Everybody loves it. All right, but those are the types of things that I think also will create a little bit more opportunity for us to bring ideas to to that. So if, I mean, I I do like the the idea of testing and iterating sooner than. It's like, okay, here's the dump. Here's everything we tried, but if there's something midstream, it can be brought before the the commission. And that's and and that gives us an opportunity also to brag about the fantastic work and the innovation and the agility of the team here across and throughout the community. Which only builds more trust and that'd be.
Yeah, and like to kind of take under that, you had mentioned you're going to do. Department meetings. With staff, just maybe in your managers update, know that, okay, this, I did a breakfast with.
I'll take advantage in the management reports. In the middle time.
Well, I tried it like it, tried it, didn't like it. Either way, I think that's just, yeah.
Next slide. The next steps. So like it says, uh recommending tonight to improve the content of the plan. But uh Brian and Serena and Kevin are are going to work to look at the graphic design. Presentation, we we can usually have two versions, but a a whole text version and then we have a version that goes on our website. Or user-friendly, easier to look at. Uh but those will be done shortly and then we'll release this to everybody who wants. And we'll share that obviously on our website. We'll try and make a video with that as well because. We're all very proud of the work. The planning committee worked hard. Appreciate the more support during all of that. We get to work with Brian. Getting ideas together. So it's, it's been a good process. I like where we ended up.
Very good. Well, thank you, Brian and Sabrina, for your help with this. And I'd be looking for, if there's no further questions, I'd like to mention to adopt the. Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven strategic plan.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is. Resolution twenty-two ninety-six dash twenty-two. And this is the general manager's employment contracts. We did do a review um of George's current three-year contracts and uh. It was a highly satisfactory opinion of the board, the job that he continues to do here day in and day out. And so with this, we're presenting the uh new resolution for a new contract. And that is resolution twenty-two ninety-six dash twenty-two. And if either of you want to add anything, feel free to chime in.
Welcome back.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, it's, I have been constantly uh uh. Delighted with the performance of the entire P U D and that really does, that that stems from leadership. George, you you brought that. You continue bringing that. Um you're, you're a regional. Uh you know, uh subject matter expert every time I'm like uh national, when we're in San Antonio, people were were talking about the good work that you do. And so um. Uh extremely uh pleased to 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 hook into you for another couple of years here and 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 you're an asset to the community and and I think the. Entire team will benefit from your continued service and appreciate your your efforts.
Thanks.
Yep, nothing but brags.
Better, either you want to make that a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move that we uh approve the resolution in twenty-two ninety-six dash twenty-two general manager employment contract.
A second.
Yeah, motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next up is resolution twenty-two ninety-seven dash twenty-two. Canceling resolution twenty-two seventy-six dash twenty, declaring a local emergency in response to COVID nineteen.
Okay, I'll take this one. Um. Providing you a bit of context, so March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty is when we declared a local emergency for the for the pandemic. And that was in response to the federal and state emergencies that were declared. Uh the resolution provided me with additional authority relating to purchasing. Procurement, assignment of personnel and staff scheduling. So we lived with it for two and a half years, but it's uh there's no longer an emergency at the federal level. And the state withdrew emergency orders on October thirty-first. There are still quarantine and isolation protocols from L and I, but nothing that impacts our operations directly. So. There's no need to continue the emergency, local emergency for us. So. I'm recommending that we approve the the new resolution, which basically just terminates the one that we did. I'll just add to that. For discussion. So at this point, there aren't any federal, state, local guidelines. So we are essentially lifting. The other issues that we brought on during the pandemic. So capacity limitations in our meeting rooms. Those kinds of things. Those are just kind of going, they're going away as well. We don't have those guidelines. We're going to use our common sense in terms of how we um how we manage events. Uh there's still two things that are in place that we had during the pandemic. One is the lobby enclosed and the other is remote work schedules for staff. So based on my observations of the lobby and the fact that we have a really high-functioning drive-up window. I don't have any plans on changing that right now. The engineering counter is functioning well. I haven't personally got any uh emails or phone calls about the lobby or the engineering counter. Right? So I would just leave that as it is. Not that it would remain that way forever, but I don't see a need to change it right now. Uh staff schedules is a second thing. And so uh we've been working, Kathy and I, on a new AP and P that talks about telecommuting and remote work. Because we've been doing remote work for our, the staff that can do it during the pandemic. We're going to look at flexibility in the schedule to keep some of that going. We're reviewing those AP and Ps. We're going to get our leadership team involved. They're currently reviewing it right now. The plan is at the next meeting to bring those to the board for review and comment. Uh because that will create uh new work schedules for staff. And so. Obviously, we want your support and so we'll bring those forward for discussion on November twenty-second. I think that's kind of the lasting legacy of the pandemic is just how people work and where they work. So we want to be cognizant of that. It helps for retention, recruitment. You know, there it's kind of a perceived benefit for some people, but it also presents issues and challenges as well. Uh for communication. So we want to make sure we address those. And go into this with our eyes open as far as what kind of policy we create going forward. So. Other than that, yeah, we're. More or less, other than the door being locked or the lobby being closed, we're more or less back to pre-pandemic um. Conditions and like Brian pointed out with the AR graph, you know, we'll stop talking about it now. We'll just bring things back back to the way they were. So.
That'd be nice. Finally.
So looking for a resolution or motion authorized resolution twenty-two ninety-seven dash twenty-two.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dot twenty-two nine seven dash twenty-two. Termination of resolution, declaring a local emergency due to COVID nineteen.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Almost three years in the making.
You think a lot of people would say it.
With gusto.
Yeah, it felt good saying it.
Um let's see, next up, we have the agreement with uh the city of Cedar Woolley. Uh George, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, so there was an article in the Skydally Herald this morning that was a little premature. So there is not any interlocal in place. One side, the city has approved this agreement. We are now bringing it forward for potential action. So just to clarify that. Um I've been talking to the city administrators, you know, really for most of this year about um doing in a fire hydrant agreement similar to what we have with Mount Vernon. So just to provide some context, in Cedar Woolley, within the city limits, there's about four hundred and fifty hydrants. And. We would prefer to have clear ownership on our side. So that we're control of the maintenance and repairs of those hydrants. Uh fire hydrants are access points to our water system. And there's a, there's a risk of damage, there's a risk of contamination if repairs and maintenance aren't done correctly. So. We want to own all of that because it's connected to our water system. By owning the hydrants, we're committing to performing maintenance on each hydrant at least once every five years. So every year, we'll do twenty percent of the total. We'll do the maintenance. That's the same thing we do with Mount Vernon. The city is committed to reimbursing us for some upfront immediate repairs and replacements. So it's one of the attachments to the. Um agreement. There's some cost analysis in there. As well as they're going to reimburse us for right away permit fees that we have to take out in the city as kind of a. Trade-off for doing the maintenance. As I said, the city council's already approved it. Uh but this is the first time I brought it to the board uh for review and approval. I've been working with Pete on it. He's reviewed language in it. I've worked with Brian on it. Um but the, if approved, the maintenance agreement will start January first. So we'd start doing maintenance right away, starting next year, and we'd fix the twenty or so hydrants that need immediate work. Uh and then we would just take over the maintenance. And I think it's a huge headache off the fire department. And we prefer not to have fire departments doing maintenance of the hydrant. So this is where this stems from.
So do we have the same deal with Mount Vernon that we do with basically?
Basically, the the cost sharing is different. Mount Vernon is contributing to some of our maintenance costs. Cedar Woolley is contributing to the repair costs upfront one time only. So there's, there's some slight differences. Um but in general, yes, they're turning over the ownership to us.
Hey, so I'd look for a motion to approve the transfer agreement with City of Cedar Woolley.
I make a motion to approve the transfer agreement between the city of Cedar Woolley. Yes.
Motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Art, that's something we don't see all the time.
Can I mention something about that?
So yes.
People may not know this, but we have interlocals with smaller water systems locally that don't have staff to do repairs. So we have them with city blinders, uh the Swinners Tribe and listed. And we got a call out to do some repairs over on Harbor Lane, uh whenever that was, three or four weeks ago. And it's an interlocal that we have and you saw the thank you card and the information. They're really appreciative.
Was that an emergency?
Yeah, it's uh Mike knows more about it, but it was a a place where that that's been repaired, a pipe that's been repaired multiple times. And we helped kind of just fix it for, so that it doesn't happen again. We have the staff and the equipment to. To do that kind of work and we went in there and they couldn't get a contract, right? This is. Late night, I think it was a weekend. I can't remember when it was, but this is something that we responded to because. We're able to respond to it as well. So a service we provide, obviously, it's an interlocal. They pay us for the work. But we did a good job and the thank you card just shows that with our guys, they they handled it really well.
I was looking at the address going, where's the Harbor Lane? And then I was thinking maybe it was out by the golf course or something. Okay, that makes sense.
So it's nice to get cards like that once in a while.
Any commissioner comments this evening?
Do I have one? Um I, as a, as a commissioner, uh it has been brought to my attention and is my obligation responsibility. To request a, that we convene in an executive session to uh address the allegations or charges of. Plights brought against a public officer or employee. I do so uh in the interest of transparency. Uh I'm looking forward to hearing from the fellow commissioners uh of what they think and and rest assured.
All right, so we have a motion to convene an executive session under R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero. 打断 time fifteen to thirty minutes. Uh we adjourning or we?
Yeah, I, yeah, don't imagine there's any action after. Redact comments?
Yeah, I can make a comment.
Okay.
So I I wanted to thank everyone because I I'm pretty sure a lot of you won't be able to wait around. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight and I'm going to address um the comments. And uh I really appreciate the kind words um by letting you know. Um informing you, mentioning that uh I've known my opponent since she was a little girl and even helped her run for office a few years ago. Um I love to see women in office and you know, that's all it takes from me, I guess, and uh. Uh but this isn't about my opponent. Uh this is about just a misinterpretation. Uh over an agreement. Uh granted, I certainly could have and I I know that I should have. Handled it very differently and for that I apologize. To my fellow commissioners and uh the staff, employees and the public. Especially to my fellow commissioners. Again, and thank you for attending and um. Happy election day. And uh. I bet we cannot wait until it's all over. And.
Executive session, no action after we return to five fifty.